Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order tonight. I'd like to first lead us in our prayer, and from our prayer we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Higgins-Botham, call roll please.
Councilman Boozer.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Hogg.
Here.
Give a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Under Presentations, Mayor Aaron's office has a proclamation, and we will defer and give her the floor.
This is Mr. Walter Turner, he is here today with us. Whereas the mission of the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency is to provide the fullest possible account of the missing personnel from past conflicts to the families of the nation, and whereas their research and operational missions include coordination with hundreds of countries and municipalities around the world, and whereas presently more than eighty-three thousand Americans remain missing from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Cold War, the Gulf War, and more recent conflicts, and whereas we acknowledge with honor and reverence the brave Americans who have held in captivity, and those whose fates have never been resolved, and whereas we will never forget their ultimate sacrifice, nor will we ever abandon our responsibility to do everything in our power to bring them home again, and whereas POW MIA Recognition Day is a day of remembrance and hope for the speedy and safe return of American prisoners of war and those still missing in action. Now therefore, I Donna Aaron by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Friday, September fifteenth, two thousand seventeen to be POW MIA Recognition Day in the City of Northport, and encourage our citizens to remember and honor our missing soldiers and those held as prisoners of war.
Thank you Mayor and council members. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the men and women who have served and sacrificed to keep America free, those former prisoners of war and the families of the over eighty-three, eighty-three thousand that remain missing. As Americans, let us recommit ourselves to remaining strong in our devotion to the principles for which so many courageously fought and sacrificed. On September fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, let us remember those who put country before self and did not return home to their families. Let us remember the families of the missing who continue to burn the candle of hope, and let us continue to tell America the story that without the service and sacrifice of the American servicemen and woman, they would not have been a United States of America. May God bless our former prisoners of war, may God bless the memory of the missing and their families, may God keep our men and women in uniforms safe and their families strong, and may God continue to bless the United States of America. We invite you all to come out to VFW Post sixty-two twenty-two on Friday the fifteenth of September at two o'clock where we'll have a, our tenth POW MIA Recognition Day Ceremony. I will guarantee you that if you have never seen a ceremony such as this, this will be one that you will always remember. Thank you Mayor, thank you. Thank you.
Next presentation is our 2016 Audit Report, LaCroy Hunter.
Thank you Mayor and Honorable Councilmen, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the City of Northport and appreciate all the help and assistance given to us during the time of forming our audit. We met with the Finance Committee about three weeks ago and went through the audit report in detail, as far as any recommendations, the actual numbers, any items of non-compliance or anything, we went through that detail at that time. In the pre-meeting, we went through the highlights of the audit report as far as the General Fund, as well as the Water and Sewer Board, and any recommendations that we had. Couple of matters of bullet points that I think are important that you note, the audit report itself for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen was an unmodified opinion, which means we had no material weaknesses or items that would affect your audit report, that is very important for the bonding company. Secondly, we had no items of non-compliance with laws and regulations as it relate to how we spend money for restricted funds and so forth related to bond issues, as well as gasoline excise tax and other restricted funds. We did have six items of what we consider to be material weaknesses in internal control, which we addressed with the Finance Committee, they are in the process of correcting those and having those put into place as we move through the year that we're in now and into the year two thousand eighteen as well. Any questions or anything from the council or the Mayor in our earlier meeting?
No.
Okay, if not, as we've done in the past, the audit report does need to be formally accepted by the council, we will then send their audit reports to the proper third-party agencies for their review. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda. In our pre-meeting, of course, we went through the agenda through Mr. Higgins-Botham's office, and if there is, there's a motion to approve the agenda, there's a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second? Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Sir, Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six is visitors to address our council, I know Mr. Bill Lunsford and Mr. Ron's here tonight, I think you guys gave us something in the pre-meeting, and if it pleases Mayor and Council, want to give just a little bit update on what we discussed in our pre-meeting, if that's okay. Alright.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our pre-meeting, we discussed, of course, a bit of a change in a site plan that we have on a retail center at Wildcat Drive and Rose Boulevard, changing from retaining wall to a sloped elevation in the back of the building and to the north side of the building. It would encroach on city property behind the fire station and also the north side on the county school board. County School Board has elected unanimously to give us approval to cross their line and reduce the elevation, and we ask your consideration there to take a look at the site and review the material we gave you, and hopefully give us approval to do the same on the side that, between the Irish Development and the fire station, excuse me, all landscaping, all sloping, all work, all drainage, it's a responsibility of Lunsford Construction, the drainage does all slope to us, so we will give you a stormwater plan that will verify that from the civil engineers you requested, we'll have that to you early this week.
Thank you Ron, and again, it's a, and I'll chime in, it's a really, really good infield development for that area, and I think, I think a couple council members have gone already to the site and looked at it, I think there's some mechanics behind it, I know Ron Davis in his office is going to walk, walk us through the legal portion of it once we get to that point, but we do have a council meeting next week, so I think everybody was somewhat in agreement to have your decision by next council meeting.
We look forward to working with you.
Yes sir, thank you. Next visitor to address the council is representative from North Star Emergency, excuse me, Emergency Medical Services.
Hey, I'm Edgar Callaway with North Star EMS, this is Casey Sears, Mayor and Council, we wanted to share Tuscaloosa's EMS Award with Northport Fire Department and ourself. We, this is the second year we've been here, last year we got the Gold Award.
So we're winning awards that Tuscal, it's got a name from Tuscaloosa.
Yeah, it's kind of for all of Tuscaloosa.
I just had to put that on record, I'm sorry.
So basically, last year we got the Silver Award for American Heart Association Mission Lifeline, which was our first year, and basically it's when you have chest pain, we get a twelve lead EKG run within the first ten minutes, it's trying to save your life quicker. And I've always said that Tuscaloosa's a fantastic place to have a heart attack if you want to have one, and so this year we applied, we met the same criteria, and we got the Gold Award, so for our second year in a row. The thing about it is we have to have kind of a buy-in from everybody, so for us to apply for this award, Northport Fire Rescue has to help us in getting the twelve leads on that front end as we do the transport, so it's kind of a system-wide award, but we always make sure and let the Fire Department know how much we appreciate their help and how big, because they get there a lot of times way before we do, and they are able to get a twelve lead, get the information so we can get it to DCH, and if you're having a heart attack, get you a heart cath or the proper care as quickly as possible. So on behalf of North Star EMS, the American Heart Association presenting Northport Fire and Rescue with the two thousand seventeen Mission Lifeline Gold Award.
Alright.
I would just like to thank North Star for presenting, I would also like to thank the citizens of Northport and this administration for providing us with the tools, we had to have that life pack that y'all got, and I appreciate that, thank you.
New business, item eight A-one is a first reading of an ordinance amending and establishing speed limits along all US and Alabama highways within the city limits of Northport, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Yes sir, the Code of Alabama requires that, that ALDOT post-speed limits along these roadways, the periodically, they will go back and reevaluate these roads due to changes in use, changes in different parameters, they have gone and evaluated all of their roadways, some of which are located within the City of Northport. Generally speaking, there's not many changes, a couple I will bring to your attention is there will be an area along Highway forty-three that the speed limit will be reduced to fifty-five, and there will be an area along Highway sixty-nine that will also be reduced to forty-five. These are generally areas that are in highly populated regions, they're, they're actually areas that you're coming off the same speed, and it's just before you, you move further out into the less populated areas to get the higher speeds, they're, they're just increasing those lengths somewhat. There are a few other changes, all of these changes are included in your packet to go through, but generally speaking, these are very short stretches of roadway and highway that they're, that they're making their changes on, and this is just a first reading tonight as well.
Alright, thank you Bruce, anybody like to offer that for a first reading?
Offer that for a first reading.
Offered up by Councilman Davis, thank you. Item may be one, excuse me, is deleted, item may be two is a resolution authorizing our Mayor's Office to execute an agreement for stop-loss insurance, Mr. Rose.
Yes, Mr. President, Mayor, Members of Council, as you know, our Health Insurance Fund, we are a self-funded plan, and we contract through Cobb's Allen Hall and HCC Life Insurance for our stop-loss insurance. What this is, is for catastrophic claims, individual claims that go over seventy-five thousand dollars, they will pick up dollar for dollar and reimburse us, reimburse the city for that, so that gives us a layer of protection with our Health Insurance Fund if we do have a catastrophic claim, and tonight I'm asking you to execute a renewal contract with both, both HCC Life Insurance Company and Cobb's Allen as the broker for that. With the ever-rising cost of health insurance, this year was only a six percent increase, which I felt very comfortable with, the brokerage fees are staying the same, it's just the actual claim for the life, not for the life insurance, for the stop-loss on the health insurance side, so that's up for your consideration. Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, is there a motion to adopt that resolution authorizing the Mayor's Office to enter into an agreement with HCC Insurance Company and Cobb's Allen for stop-loss insurance? That's a motion by Councilman Boozer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item three is a resolution authorizing our City Administrator's Office to execute a copier lease agreement with Cannon Solutions, again, this is out of Ms. Hoffman's office, and I think in our pre-meeting, Ms. Hoffman, this is a way to consolidate and maybe add some savings by the leasing of five new multifunction printers for City Hall and public safety, right? And I've got the amount twenty-three thousand five hundred seven, seventeen dollars and sixty cents, so again.
That's over the five years.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item four is a resolution authorizing our Mayor's Office to enter into a lease agreement with ALDOT for parking under the Hugh Thomas Bridge, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Yes sir, we're, this is basically an extension of a current lease agreement that we have with ALDOT, it expires every three years, it's basically a zero-cost agreement, it's for a dollar, it's for us to use the right-of-way under the Hugh Thomas Bridge for parking. The agreement, or the lease agreement that you will be signing is for three years, it also includes the option to extend that same agreement for another three years.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I think that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item five is a resolution accepting the 2016 Audit Report, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Yes sir, as stated by our auditor, we do have, we were presented the audit report earlier tonight and this evening, we, it is now presented to council for the option to adopt a resolution accepting this 2016 Audit Report.
Alright, is there a motion to adopt that resolution accepting the 2016 Audit Report?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six is a resolution reappointing members to the Civil Service Board, Mr. Rose.
Yes, Mr. President, item six and seven are of the same nature, with our Civil Service Board, we have five members and their terms are staggered, we actually have two positions that are up for either appointment, reappointment, and these will be for six years, they'll be, they'll be a six-year term, the next one won't be till nineteen, twenty, and then twenty-one, so it's up to the pleasure of the council to either reappoint or come up with another appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, is there a motion on the floor from members of council for a name for reappointment or appointing?
I move to adopt the resolution reappointing Mr. Jeff Redding to the Northport Civil Service Board for the six-year term.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Again, item seven, Mr. Rose, again, another resolution?
Yes, this will be for the second term that I was explaining earlier, we have another appointment that needs to be made to our Civil Service Board, this will also be for another six-year term to our board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution reappointing or appointing a member?
I move to adopt the resolution reappointing Mr. Terry Woods to the Northport Civil Service Board for a six-year term.
Alright, thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda, we have thirteen items, they range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, and PO requisitions for various departments. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, real quick, I do want to point out one item on the consent agenda, it's item number eleven, the two thousand eighteen Regional Air Show, the seventy-five thousand dollars, just wanted to remind everybody that their show is coming back in two thousand eighteen, so I know we're all excited about that, so I just wanted to mention that out there, so.
Thank you. Item nine is reports of special committees to council, we have one, but if it pleases Mayor and council, we, I wanted to give our one citizen who has signed up to speak, let them, allow them to speak, if that's okay, we'll go back to item nine, if that's possible. So, Ms. Lewis, how are you? Yes ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Geneva Lewis, fifty-six, nineteen, Union Chapel Terrace. I think that all of you should have received an invitation in the last week or so from ARSEA Appeal to the Mayor, the Council, and Mr. Higgins-Botham, you might have received one with the wrong name, I don't know, it should have had Scott Collins, but it is for you. This is for the President's Dinner at our convention next week, and ARSEA Appeal may not ring a bell with y'all, that's the Alabama Retired State Employees Association, and Appeal is the Alabama Public Employees Advocacy League. We represent state employees who have retired, as well as city and county employees who have retired, and this is presented by four PAC, which is our political action arm, and if y'all are not already acquainted with them, you probably would like to be, you would get a warm welcome if you come to this, and four PAC endorses candidates, and we help, we help the ones that are friendly with retired employees, and I'm sorry my voice is going, but we'll have lots of local candidates or people who have been elected locally, we'll have legislators there, we'll have entertainment there, you'll get a nice meal, and you'll get to meet lots of retired employees, and we are boots-on-the-ground for people who are running for election, we're also votes, and these are people who make a difference in elections. We have made the difference in elections locally, and some of you know that already. We, we actively endorse candidates, we work in campaigns, and we get out and vote. There are lots of retired state employees right here in Northport. Bryce Hospital at one time was the largest employer in Tuscaloosa County, not anymore, but a lot of people retired from there, and we vote, so we're important people to know, and during the break before your executive session, if you would, I'd like to get with y'all to see who is going, who won't be going, and who would like to bring a guest, you can bring a guest, and I need the names and the numbers so that I can get that into the Central Office in Montgomery, and we'll be prepared to have y'all, and we would love to have you be our guests, thank you. That's on Tuesday night.
Tuesday night at what time?
Five-thirty is the reception, six o'clock for the dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, if it pleases Mayor and Council, may I run through items ten, eleven, and twelve, that way we can have a little bit more time, I think Councilman Hogg and myself have a small presentation, and we'd like to make sure we get everybody's business out front, so, public, excuse me, item ten, public hearings, we have none to report, item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Higgins-Botham.
Sir, I have nothing to know.
Item twelve, departmental business, I think, Ron, you have a requested executive session.
Yes sir, I'd ask at the end of the regular council meeting that we take about a ten-minute break to allow council members to meet with Ms. Lewis and also the media, and then go into executive session, I think the executive session will be quite lengthy, I would say an hour or longer, I think that the department heads can go home, will come back and vote to adjourn, that will be the only business that will be after we go into executive session.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, it's primarily retail development and also briefly on some potential litigation.
Thank you Ron, I'll go right into item fourteen, Mayor and Councilmember's business, if that pleases Mayor and Council. District one, Councilman Boozer.
Yes, I'd like to announce we will have an admin meeting tomorrow at three-thirty.
Thank you, Councilman, anything else to report?
No other reporting items.
Thank you. District two into my business, I know Russ Ware, he's, he's our BKI Design Team with our MLK Improvement Project, we had slated a meeting with the Federal Highway Department as well as ALDOT today, due to the weather, that's been, been canceled, but that won't, that won't hold the project up, that'll be rescheduled, and once we get this meeting between ALDOT and internal staff, we will then move forward with the public involvement meeting that's required, once we do that, you'll start seeing that project really take shape and start moving, so, again, you can't beat the weather, so. Once we do that, you'll start seeing that project really take shape and start moving, so, again, you, you can't beat the weather, so we'll just wait for Aldot to give us another date to meet internally, so, that's my update from my district. District three, Councilman Sullivan?
Just one thing real quick, very exciting to announce a new, an event that's coming back this year. As you know, in years past, we've held a Twas the Night Before Christmas five K run at night at Kentuck Park, and last year, due to several circumstances and a, a little, a small election that we had, we postponed it, so it is coming back, here are the logos for this year. It is December first, so we'll get, we got a few more details to work out, but we're fixing to start promoting this very, very, very heavily. All pre, proceeds will go to your local D H R, we've done that in the past, and they're a wonderful organization, so we're all getting very excited about this, so. A lot more info to come in the future, but just, just get ready, it's, it's coming, it's coming quick too, so, I'll give you more information soon as I have it, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, district four, Councilman Davis?
President Logan, I, I do not have any at this time.
Yes, sir, district five, Councilman Hogg?
I don't, I don't have anything for our district, but I do want to just reiterate our thoughts and prayers to everyone that's in Texas over the last few weeks, also with Florida, with the hurricane, then also today being nine eleven, it's a special day for everyone to reflect and be proud of that you get to go home, see your family, and proud of what you have, and if you haven't lost anything tonight, like a lot of other people have, so.
Thank you. Item, excuse me, Mayor Aaron?
I have a couple of things, one, going off what Councilman Hogg has suggested as far as our sympathies and our prayers and our thoughts going out to those particularly in Texas and Florida now with all the tragedy that has gone on. We had, we partnered with High Thoughts for Hope and sent a truckload of supplies to some areas of their, things that they moved in. Brought them into City Hall, and they took them Friday afternoon. I am sure we will do the same thing for our neighbors, next door neighbors, our South neighbors. Florida, it's just I'd imagine what I've seen with the devastation and all has got to be totally heartbreaking, and those lives are changed forever. Might be the same again, also, at least. Or they are in our prayers and in our thoughts. One other item. As Ron tells me quite often, I don't have a vote. Right, I am going to approach as such, that we have had, at one of the meetings, we started since we've been in office, which has been far too long, we didn't have someone who was mayor. And I would like to suggest that we, the Jew, if I can vote, entertain an idea of allowing this dirt to come up into the, um, our city administrator, he was going out selling a job, and bumped into this situation, and has taken charge, and has done an excellent job, and people have been handling two jobs for some time. But I would like to suggest that maybe he needs to move on and settle that, that issue.
Thank you, mayor, again, recommendation from the mayor's office to appoint and vote Bruce Higginbotham as permanent city administrator, again, a member of council by virtue of code will have to make that in the form of a motion and second, but the recommendation from the mayor's office is to appoint Bruce Higginbotham as permanent city administrator for the city of Northport, so, that's in the form of a motion. Excuse me, offered up by council members if they choose to do so.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion. And I move that the interim term be removed from Bruce Higginbotham's position, and that he be named to the non-civil service position of city administrator for the city of Northport effective immediately. As part of this motion, I also move that he retain his civil service status, that if he is removed as city administrator at any time in the future, that he revert to his current civil service position. I would request the mayor negotiate the terms of his contract with the city, that's my motion.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Boozer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis? Any questions or comments? Hearing number Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, I think we have one item under our reports of special committees to council, this is our retail and development committee, which Mayor Aaron, myself, and Councilman Hogg chair. You know, in the course of doing these committee meetings, we retail's a little bit different, because you really can't report on a lot of things that are going on, but you know, we were tasked with creating this committee and creating some goals and objectives, so we can be better prepared to accept and create the retail environment needed, so. Councilman Hogg and myself have kind of worked on just an update, and again, I, I, I say this to say everybody's an expert in retail development, so I'm assuming after this meeting, we're going to get a lot of people who say you should have done X, or I would not do X, I get that. So I want to preface by saying no comment statement of representation is made by this committee can never supersede any comments, statements of representations, and also any applicable state and city codes, so, again, this is just something we've been working on. Jeff and the mayor, myself, and we hope you guys kind of see the vision, what we're trying to do, again, it's not going to be perfect. We said it when we got elected in Swanee, and if you guys remember sitting up here, we said we were going to do things out of the box. We're going, we're going to look at doing some things that Northport has not done in the past, doing some things that, that may be uncomfortable, so. With that being said, we, we have a presentation, and I know I T's working on it, so we'll get right into it, our committee members, of course, Councilman Jeff Hogg, he's chair, council president, myself, and the mayor's office, she works all five committees, so she's very busy. So the goal of this committee is, again, we're going to create the environment for retail recruitment. It's important to note that when we all were campaigning, that was one issue that everybody on this, on this panel got hit up with. We want X, we want X, we want more retail, but what comes first, you know, you first have to develop some sort of identity and a plan, and you have to create the environment, it's important to do that for existing businesses and for potential retail. And then we in turn, we, we in turn, we looked at determining the internal or external personnel needs to focus on retail every day. So that's when we were tasked with, we made a recommendation to mayor and council a few months back to retain Retail Three Sixty, our consult, who has done a really good job in pairing local developers with information and national developers and tenants. So again, trying to determine the external need that, that we're trying to meet, and then the internal needs inside of City Hall, maybe some personnel and staff needs that are still ongoing, and on our planning department, they're going to be working hand in hand with retail and all the other departments and internally, so we know we needed someone to be the conduit between local developers and City Hall, so we, we actually hired a development coordinator, Max Snyder, he's going to be working out of planning, but his, his main task is to make the process not, not so much smoother, but make it more functional internally, and make sure that the development community has a point of contact along with some external partners, so, again, we had to determine the needs internal and externally. We looked beyond the traditional ways, and I'll let Jeff chime in, so, Jeff, if you want to say something about that, when, where we looked beyond the traditional way of what Northport used to do.
I think everyone knows the definition of insanity, which is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result, so, we're just trying to think outside the box and see what we can do differently in Northport to, to gain the business that the citizens want, the quality type of business that the citizens want. So as we, as we go forward, you know, we're, we're tasking everyone, you know, from the council, the mayor, staff, all of our external partners, just to get a plan in place that, that we're going to look at all the different gaps in, in retail and all the protocols as possible. And we, we've got to move forward and with a purpose, so.
That's an important move with purpose, and I, I, I agree, Jeff, we, here's the thing that we, we can all agree on as citizens and taxpayers, and even if you're outside the city. At some point, you can't be static, and you have to start being ballistic, you have to start making some type of movement, do something, and have a plan and, and stick with that plan, so, it's going to be important that we, we do something with retail and recruitment and retention. Quick, some quick numbers, quick facts, some sticking numbers, Northport by the numbers, we're right at twenty-five thousand and forty-five, I put an asterisk, I have, I've got a five-month-old, so that's twenty-five and forty-six. Rodney's got one, that, that's tw- forty-seven, so, so we put an asterisk right there. So, Northport currently is the twenty-third largest city in the state of Alabama, we were twenty-first, we got jumped by Athens and Daphne, but again, when you look at those numbers, we've got some homes coming online, forty-three and, and that area, Mid Layer Road, so again, sixty-nine, so again, we're going to jump back again when the census rolls back around. You know, we may hit twenty-eight thousand, I'm just, I'm real confident of that. Moving down the page, seven point six. It's really seven point two, that's the population growth percentage in the positive that Northport has seen that growth, again, that just shows to the strong residential building community, people wanting to come to this city and move into this community, and I think that's saying something about our community. Median income is about fifty-three thousand, so that says people have a livelihood that they can have a quality of life to be proud in inside of Northport. The other sticking point number is twenty million, remember that number, twenty million is what we estimated through our consult and just speaking with local developers and, and just people that we, we've come in contact with in our committee, is the estimated leakage or gap in our retail. Meaning a lot of the goods and services we have here in Northport, we utilize, if you saw in our audit, we're up maybe half a million sales tax. So that's saying something, I don't think that was, that wasn't articulated here, but in the pre-meeting, you know, a lot of people use these services in Northport. We may not have a lot of them, but we really use them. Yeah, four oh nine, from the pre, from the prior year, city sales tax revenues increased four hundred nine thousand five hundred eleven. That's really saying something. The median home income is one sixty-two-two, and again, these are numbers that, that are pulling from the U S Census data. In our residential, business, and sales tax, we've seen growth from the previous year, so, Northport by the numbers has really grown, and it's in the positive, so, Jeff, I'll let you hit this next one.
Okay. The, the, the cities that are doing the, the right things, and we want to try to mimic, we want to be ourselves, but we also want to mimic what other cities have done to entice business and, and to make a thriving city for their citizens, so. What we have learned through, through our analysis is these cities have become more aggressive and hard-nosed about market analysis. They have created success-sharing goals and became results-driven. That's what we're trying to do now, is, is we're trying to put some goals out there for us internally and create some different success-sharing opportunities that, that businesses, that will attract them and make them, make them want to do business in Northport. We also need to, these cities also understood the need to engage local developers and use the trend of positional residential growth with retail needs with tools that are non-traditional, so. A few, few months ago, I think, Scott, you had told us the numbers on the, what the residential growth was. Terms of numbers, do you recall that today, off the top of your head? And that, and that's a lot, so. And then the next part of that is to invest major resources into their community long-term.
Let me tell you what mistakes some cities do. I'll be the negative guy, we have an unrealistic view of our market. I don't know how many times I had somebody say, I want a Nordstrom's, I want a Neiman Marcus, well, I do too. I, I do too, I love to have a Neiman Marcus, but do you think our market can support that, so we have to be realistic in what we're going to do. Okay, and the other thing is, we need, we're not willing to step outside the box, and I say we, most cities who make the mistake. They're not willing to step outside and do the non-traditional. So that's where we go back to, you're going to see us do some things that are outside the box, some creative ways in making sure that when people come with a viable project and it's realistic, we need to be doing all we can to look at creative ways to bring that retail in. And our existing businesses, if they have a creative way where they can reinvest into the community, we need to be stepping outside of some traditional lanes and making that happen. Everybody wants to be the next Silicon Valley, everybody, it'd be great. Is it realistic, can we, can we achieve that, do we have the infrastructures in place to be the next Silicon Valley, I don't know that. And then in doing that, will you lose your identity, that's one thing that I think as a community we don't want to do. I think you never want to lose your identity, but at the same time, you want to try to strike the balance. Again, cities think that retail, I'm going to read it verbatim, cities think that retail will locate to my town because I simply want them to be there. If you think that way, we're going to be twenty years behind. Currently, you know, national retailers and, and and developers, they don't locate to a city just because it's X. There's so many different factors that come into play when people look at locating to a city, that you have to have this infrastructure in place to where you can be a viable candidate in a location. We found that out now working through our consult, because again, who wouldn't want a Neiman Marcus? But I hate to see a Neiman Marcus get here and close down in four months, because nobody can support it. So you have to be realistic about it and say that our city has to start putting itself out there and marketing itself in a way where we can get the realistic goals, and we can get the, the really big market items that, that will really bring something back to Northport. Cities find it hard to balance progress and preservation, that's one thing that I think we all can agree in here, we want to make sure that we, we preserve our historic character and nature, that's what make us, that's what makes Northport, Northport. But at the same time, you have to try to strike that balance, and I think that's a conversation where as a community, we have to be looking at that. Meaning, we want to progress, but we also want to preserve, and there is a balance, and you can do that. You can have both, I think most cities have found that to be true, and we, we, you'll show a slide later that'll back up what we're saying. Cities fail to realize its true potential and exercise more caution than they do action. It's easy to talk yourself out of a deal, I get it, it's, it's, it's new. You feel like you're not sure-footed, so, when you, when Northport looks at bringing in retail, we have to be certain and sure-footed, and then take the leap, we've got to do that. And I've got one, one caption, you see the dinosaurs up there, the T. rexes, all right, that says failure to adapt to a changing climate, everybody knows. If you don't change with the times, and if we don't adapt and try to strike the balance between preservation and progress, we're going to get left behind. And we're slowly starting to see a little bit of that, but I think Northport has got a lot going for itself in terms of residential growth, positive community, we've got a great staff, we've got great internal controls, we've got, externally, we're, we're viewed as a very viable city in the state. So these are things we use to our advantage, and I think we just haven't been doing it in the past, but we've got to be able to adapt to this change in market and retail. I mean, you've got to be able to do that, and using your existing partners. So the lessons that we learn is we need to capitalize on our assets, again, like I said before, looking at what we do well and uniqueness of our entire community, we've got one of the best downtowns you're going to see in America. And it's not manufactured, we've got one of the best residential growth patterns that you're going to see in a town our size. You know, that's, that's proven by census numbers. We need to be bold in our actions, no area should be left behind, and Jeff will touch on this in a minute when we zoned our city off. Meaning it's easy to improve an area that's already been improved, but the lifting, or the heavy lifting is when you have to start improving areas all over your entire city. That, that makes for better business, because when you can market your entire city into not one segment, then you can start marketing your entire city. So no areas should be left behind in redevelopment, reinvesting, and every community needs to be brought up, so we've identified it again, and that's going to be important moving forward in these next slides. We need to focus on quality developments. I think everybody in this room, I think we got enough chicken places, right? Amen, okay, amen, coin in the back, we can go get a chicken place, but it's, it's hard to get a quality development. So if you want quality, we got to demand quality, but we got to have the infrastructure to, to support it and have the capacity. We've got to be able to do it. We can go get the chicken places and the small ones, we, we can get those, it's just the quality developments, we have to start putting things in place where we can start recruiting them aggressively. We need to leverage and support our existing business owners. Again, that's what pays the sales tax, that's what keeps lights on here at City Hall, that's what keeps your trash getting picked up, these existing businesses, where they always pay the sales tax, and we need to find ways to support them. You'll see in future slides here that we're going to try to do some things where we go to business owners and say, listen, we know you have been here for twenty years. What do you see as an idea to make your business more viable with a freshened outlook, you know, as far as some brick and mortar construction, a facade improvement program? That's how you support your existing business owners, because they want to be here, because it shows that every February, you get that check from them. So, we've got a real dedicated and loyal local business community, and we need to keep supporting them. Norport needs to hold ourselves accountable. We really do internally. We need to set the standard and move forward and set the parameters. But at the same time, we need to hold our external partners accountable as well. It's gon- it's gonna be a two-way street. So these, these old partners that we've had, we're gonna re-engage them. And these new partnerships and relationships, we're gon- we're gonna hold them accountable in ourselves as well. So you'll see moving forward that our city staff is working really hard. They're trying to find ways to shave the, the red tape. I think we've gotten advantage over a lot of other cities where we're not so layered, where you basically see four people to get something done. Again, that's saying something, where if you go into another city, you may see twenty-four people. And that just, again, it adds to the value that we got internally. And again, finally, confidentiality is crucial. World's worst is when you heard about something on the street and finally don't come to fruition, and we're all got egg on our face. We need to stop doing it. If it's confidential, it's confidential. Even if you hadn't signed one, I think it makes for a better product when we can, we don't have to spike the football when we do get something. Or even tell the opposing team to play. And I'm using football now, just 'cause we got a game Saturday. Don't tell the team, the opposing, you know, opposing team to play. Let's let the process work, and then we can all get out there for the ribbon-cutting. So, I'll let Jeff take this next one. This next slide is re-engaging our partners.
The last thing on there, Jay, is, oh, this comes without saying, but one of the points on here was be committed, because it takes patience. So, ju- just because we sat out with our consultant, R-Three-Sixty, uh, at the beginning of the year. I mean, there's been a lot of different talks with different, uh, national and regional retailers. But, uh, when you start getting into the nuts and bolts of, uh, of getting those guys here, um, it just takes a little while. It's nothing that happens overnight. Um, while we wanna see it happen overnight, we, we have to be realistic as well. So, um, that's, that's one of the, those things of, of us preparing this, uh, committee report, uh, to you guys, is so everyone can see, um, that we're working hard every day on, on retail, and we've got a lot of things in the pipeline right now that, that, uh, that could hit and the dominoes could fall, uh, very quickly. It's just, uh, it's just a matter of time. So be patient with us and, uh, hopefully soon, we'll, we'll be able to, uh, announce, uh, a lot of different things, um, going forward. How do we do that, though? We have to re-engage with our partners, with old partners and with new partners as well. I mean, we've got the University of Alabama across the river. We've got our consultant, Three-Sixty. Uh, we've got Aldott, who has, uh, who has been recently, uh, working with us very well on a couple of different things. Uh, we've got our, um, we've got the school system, Chamber of Commerce, uh, the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvements Commission, and the Tuscaloosa IDA. And, uh, it's just gonna take a little bit of us, um, you know, greasing the skids a little bit and, and getting with our partners and, and everyone showing, that they've got the, the right mindset and the focus going forward for Northport.
Yeah, and, and I wanna point out, we've got one of our partners in the audience, Dean McClure and Al Spencer from the Chamber. Thank you, guys. I mean, really, we're gonna hold you accountable. So if we can, if we can work on some things together, let, let's get it going. If there's information that we need to know and, and vice versa, to bring some more retail that's viable and start priming the pump, we, we're, we're all ears. So, um, I, I'm glad to see you guys, at least seeing what we're trying to, uh, vision for our city. Um, next slide is Norport is reaching critical mass. When I say critical mass, I got it, I got a definition of it based on retail. I'm gonna read it. The term "critical mass" is used to refer generally to the minimum amount of something needed to produce a given effect. I'll use an example. Norport needs a critical mass of new retail and development to attract more business. Can we agree with that one? So we're a critical mass. And I've, I've got a great slide of downtown Norport. Again, you, you can't manufacture it. It, it's, it's there. And you've got a picture of what could be in some areas of our city. Uh, marrying the two is gonna be the challenge, but then you have to make sure that you have enough of it to support existing businesses and future business. So again, critical mass. This is where we are. Not DEFCON five, but we need to be looking at, how can we get that sales tax number to go from five-hundred K to one-point-five? How can we do that in the next two or three years? That's important. So again, we identified our areas for growth. Jeff and I looked at our city map and we broke it out in districts. That was probably the easier thing to do. And we used the ICE method. We identified the areas. We created the zones, and we, we're gonna start engaging and having a plan for each one of these zones, because every zone is gonna be different. Creating the community core is gonna be different. Downtown needs are gonna be different from forty-three. So this next slide will tell you. We took a crayon. Jeff and I write in crayon a lot. When you look at that area, and we'll start from the north, Mid Larry, Sixty-Nine North, Forty-three, that is an area we can agree on that it is booming with residential. It's almost a small economy within itself. But, but the challenge is this, you've got more families, but they need more services. Can we agree on that? How many people stay up in that area? In the audience? You got more families, but you need more services. So, you know, we drew a circle around that area, Mid Layer Road, and then we drew another one, middle part of Forty-three and Sixty-Nine, and where that overlapped is Mid Layer Road. City addressed it in transportation, so now it's setting the stage up for something really nice to happen at Sixty-Nine and Mid Larry, and even Forty-three and Mid Larry. So we, you know, we'll get to that in, in a minute. Uh, Districts Two and One, District Two is all the riverfront, all the historic downtown. Councilman Boozer and myself, we share that district. Uh, he takes it from the Big Red Dog going north. I got it from the river to the Big Red Dog, and I got East and West. He's got residential. He's got this area here. So when you're looking at Districts Two and One, you got Lurleen Wallace, you got Eighty-Two from east to west, you got new infill opportunities. You got a lot of available land that may not be city property, but it's infill opportunities. And then you have the ability to do some redevelopment. So you've gotta start pumping in some infrastructure money to get it up to a level where you can facilitate some new, new development on that river. And then moving forward, you know, you got District Three, Councilman Sullivan's district. You've got infill opportunities, high-traffic counts, along with District Two and District One. So you, you've got sixty thousand cars every day coming in here. And then Eighty-Two West, you may have thirty-seven thousand or forty thousand. Where we're sitting, I think it's thirty-eight thousand cars a day. Try to get out here at five o'clock from this building. So, and District Five, Four and Five, again, those are that, that huge residential growth, where you, you draw the circles. And three of the circles, folks, if you can see that, they pinpoint kinda similar to where we're sitting now. What we call that Forty-three, Eighty-Two, Sixty-Nine, Eighty-Two, and then you've got that high-growth area of residentially, Mid Layer Road. But again, you see three or four districts that are really primed for infill development, new, new-to-market development because of the traffic counts. And again, these are, these are not numbers. These are basically just facts that we pull from our consultant. Uh, Jeff and I, I'll just, I'll let you kinda finish on the, uh, next, next slide here.
Yeah, the, uh, the next slide here is just, just a simple map. It's just showing, um, some different businesses that, that are up Forty-three, close to, uh, Mid Larry Rose Boulevard, uh, intersection. And, uh, you'll see there, we've got, we've got some green area, uh, there, and, and you'll see that we're lacking in some, some different services up there for our citizens. So, um, you can also tell to the, to the lower part of that is, that's Clear Creek Colony, uh, homeowners. There, that's a large neighborhood there that, um, and as you go fo- forward on up Forty-three, there's Grand Point, uh, as well, which is another large neighborhood. So, there's a lot of rooftops, um, just not as many, uh, retail services, uh, up that way. So, uh, that's one of those that if, you gotta have the, you gotta have the rooftops first, uh, before you can have the, um, before you can have the retail services. So, um, you'll see the growth there. Uh, if you look at the next slide, going, this is going out west. Um, now this is, this is some of our larger retailers out there. You'll see here, it shows Lowe's, Walmart, uh, Vance Auto Parts, uh, Big Lots, Tractor Supply, uh, et cetera. There's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity going out, going out west. Uh, as Jay said, we're, we're looking at infill opportunities more on, um, Lurleen Wallace and, uh, a lot of Eighty-Two, um, just trying to fill some holes that are, that are not there anymore. But, um, this is, this right here is the way that you're seeing, uh, some things will probably be beheaded, um, in the near future. Next slide. Just basically what it says, create, uh, community cores over the entire city. So, um...
And what that's saying, Jeff, and, and I'll speak to that. Wh- when we zoned our city off, we had a lot of opportunities. And when you see, and I, I'll go to public, private, and I'll go back to that little slide. Creating the community cores is gonna be important. Um, downtown, that community core is gonna be a whole lot different. That means a lot of the architecture, and again, this is stepping in Scott Stevens backyard a little bit. That's where our planning department, our planning and zoning members, board members, uh, staff, and internal and external partners need to co- understand the value of that downtown. It's, and I think when you look at that community core, you gotta bring people downtown. That's where you get the foot traffic. That's where you get the energy. That's where you bring in that energy from the university. That's a small city within itself. Thirty-eight thousand people, that's more than what the city has and entire city limits. So bringing them to downtown is gonna be important, and creating the community core is gonna be important downtown. The community core up Forty-three may be a little bit different. So that's where you zone them off and you, and you figure out what's the best infill and what's the best highest use. And again, when you demand the quality, not the quantity, you'll get a far more better use, uh, when both developer and the city are working in tandem to, to make that community core work. So, next slide, I think we, we, we had a couple, couple staff members, I think Bruce and Scott and, and, uh, maybe a few more. Scott, I think, went to Greenville. Very good trip. They brought us a lot of information back, a lot of excitement coming from Greenville. Um, I'm not saying be Greenville. What I'm saying is have the philosophy of Greenville. Have the philosophy of Greenville. And this is a quote, Stephen Deathrich. "There isn't a successful development in a city in America that doesn't require a public-private partnership." And if you don't believe me, look at downtown Norport. Was that not private dollars? Was it not public dollars? One of the best P-threes that you've seen in a long time. So, to have a successful development, a P-three is gonna be necessary. And we say developers as a, a negative, a negative tag. Call them what you want to. Call them community builders, whatever. So Bill, you're a community builder. You're not a developer anymore. I, I'll re-tag you. So the P-three model works in a lot of cities to be successful. And Norport just hadn't had the opportunity, or, or we probably were exercising a way too much caution. P-threes are, are, are pretty much the name of the game, and I go back to, you can't stick your head in the sand and say, "Well, we don't have to do it because we're X." Well, you, I'm sorry, that's kinda the game that's being played now. The P-three is important because it allows the city and the developer and the community builder to, to create all over the entire city, areas that need to be brought up, that need to be freshened up, redeveloped, reinvested. And it, and it allows you for new development in that high-growth area along Mid Larry and Sixty-Nine and Forty-three to explode in terms of P-threes. But, um, we'll go to that again. P-threes are gonna be what we need to do.
Hey, attracting, uh, impactful new-to-market retail. You'll see here on the right, the picture. Dirt. That's what every citizen wants to see. Wants to see some dirt turning. Wants to see a shovel in the dirt. Something, something new, something exciting going on. Um, so how, how do we do that? We've gotta establish practical criteria that the developer needs to fulfill this. Gotta create shovel-ready sites. That's gonna be key for us. Establish consensus. Identify detractors.
I'm laughing at that one. Identify the detractors. You're gonna have more people come out to speak against something than you would for it.
You're right. And we, we've got, we've gotta be pro-business, and we've, we've gotta think outside the box. That, uh, identifying the detractors has to go back to, uh, what we had said earlier. And, and everyone's gotta be on board if we wanna see, uh, Northport not be twenty years behind like some cities are. They said we're the twenty, twenty-third, plus twenty-first largest city in Alabama. We need to start acting like it. Uh, we gotta tailor incentive packages. Uh, incentive packages, uh, are not for everyone. So, but, uh, there are times that you have to look at incentive packages. Um, we call those success sharing. Uh, so when, when these, when these companies come to us and, you know, they, they're gonna need our help, uh, to get here in Northport, we've really gotta look at that and say, you know, is that worth it to the city for us to, uh, to, to develop a, an incentive package for them? So, um, that's one thing that we'll have to look at. Uh, minimize regulatory and procedural issues, and then create new trade areas with existing city-owned property. So, uh, city-owned property, there, there's not, there's not much that we, that we do own, but, uh, for what we do own, though, uh, it is prime property that we need to definitely take a look at.
All right, using the Alabama Code to create growth. We were always told to stay within the bounds of the law, and I think the Alabama Code has allowed Norport to do this. And I, I'll touch very briefly on Amendment Seven-Seven-Two. That's something that we haven't, we've never flexed this amendment. Uh, half of us in the room didn't know it existed. I was one. Uh, but the Alabama Code provides, and, and again, if you go to the next slide, it's just a very sanitized legal version. Uh, in a nutshell, it, it allows economic development for the benefit of all counties, municipalities, for which a local constitution amendment has not been adopted. This amendment authorizes the use of specified economic development powers. Included in the powers are the power to use public funds to purchase, improve, develop, or lease real property in favor of private business or to convey such property to private businesses and to lend credit or issue bonds to support economic development. So, you can use public funds in the good faith of economic development for the good of your city. It says it right here. It's in the Alabama Act Two Thousand Four-Dash-Nine-Four, which is now Amendment Seven-Seven-Two. A lot of cities use it. Hoover uses it, Vestavia's and Mountain Brooks, um, your larger cities, and even some of your small ones. But Norport just never, uh, had the opportunity to do it, and I think it's a, a part of the code that we need to start flexing a whole lot more. And that's something that we're gonna be using, uh, pretty heavily. Uh, it's a, it's a public process, so you'll know exactly. It's very open and transparent, because it's required by code. Uh, but it has very, it yields high results, but we gotta be willing to do it. And I think that's an amendment that Norport, it really will favor us, given our financial strength that we have and given the stability that we've shown, uh, just in the last three or four years. So, uh, I'll get right into the meat of it. Committee actions and recommendations. We hired our outside consultant. We've done that. We've got an ongoing partnership with them. We're also looking at some internal stuff, and we, we're gonna get with staff in the next few weeks to see how can we shave the bureaucracy. Cutting the red tape a little bit more, making it more pro-business and user-friendly. Identify new and major road improvement projects and identify those zones in the Southern Core for redevelopment and improvement. Uh, Mayor Aaron is our main contact. She's doing a good job in our Road Improvement Commission, uh, working with staff here, uh, at City Hall. She's gonna be bringing some road projects. And again, these are long-term road projects. So we, we're very thankful to get Mid Layer Road behind us, but now we need to be looking to some new road projects. And we've got a few of them on the, on the books, Mayor, I think, that, that are coming down the pipe. So, you'll see some more dirt being turned in road projects. But again, utilizing Amendment Seven-Seven-Two, we have to start doing that. And using, and, and from our consult has recommended to us that it really will favor Norport. And I think Richard and his staff said we only had one incentive package on the books. So when the auditor says, "Hey, you only have one on the books," that's telling me I got some room to grow. We just have to do it in a way that's smart. Uh, we need to create new retail trade areas. And what I mean by that is, because we, we've identified our cores and we've identified what, what areas of growth based on traffic, location, residential growth, we need to start looking at, if it's city-owned property, we need to be looking at creating a retail trade area and start marrying public and private together. That's gonna be important. Here's a recommendation moving forward. Next one. This is, and now Jeff, I'll let you kinda touch on this one.
Uh, through, through our committee, we have, uh, we have looked at everything and, and thinking about, thinking outside the box. Uh, from our committee, we, we're gonna recommend to the city council, um, and also to the city that, that we strongly consider selling current City Hall location, uh, that's here and move Fire Station One to a more westerly location to create a new retail trade area right here in this location and move City Hall back to downtown area to bring more people and more energy to Northport. So, um, with doing that, we understand that there's a lot, uh, a lot of balls that will be up in the air, uh, a lot of different things that would have to happen in order to do so. But it's one of those things that we do need to look at, um, just to see if, if it's worth doing or, um, if it's not. Uh, it might not be something that, that- Uh, it might not be something that, that can be done, but if it is, uh, this is a, a prime, uh, real estate opportunity here for, uh, a lot of different developers and, uh, people that we have met with, so, um, a lot of moving parts to that, but we do, uh, we do strongly recommend that we at least consider, um, that option. Um, we also, uh, want to say that we want to invest in streetscaping, new road, water sewer projects. Uh, you've heard Jay talk about the hospital drive extension and downtown improvement to drive new development, so all of this ties in together, should we consider doing this. Uh, you also want to look to be, um, aggressive, outside the box, incentive packages with new-to-market and developments that have a high rate of return. So, uh, these are, uh, committee recommendations to, to council, um, just to at least consider to see, uh, if this is a, uh, a viable option, uh, going forward.
And again, I like this last slide, see that? We all want to do that every now and then, take the leap. Take the leap, so, that, that'll get a reaction. Little kid jumping off into the lake, you know, just take the leap. So again, just what Jeff was saying, again, these are just recommendations, we know we're thinking outside the box, I can tell by everybody, we, we hit you with a, with a cold towel, I guess, hopefully, but that's good. Um, but when you look at trying to recreate a trade area, you're gonna have to look at city property that you do own. We can't control private development directly, uh, but we can prime the pump indirectly to where we can create that environment for growth. Uh, just looking at the traffic counts, you know, if you want to bring more energy to downtown, this is, this is a way to do it. If you want to bring people downtown and where you can have a viable downtown, and you bring people back to your city, you gotta start at your core and work out. And again, we've got a thriving residential community, man, it, it is booming, so we have to find ways to do some infield development through RFPs, uh, requesting those things and doing it in a way where we can choose the quality of development that we'll be proud of, so. Again, Mayor and Council, thank you guys so much. I know we're a little lengthy, but again, we just, some things we can discuss publicly, but some things we can't. Um, hopefully we'll have some announcements, and again, if Mayor and Council wishes to, uh, kind of engage again, we, we'll be happy to give them some information, but you know, this is just one big one that we say, move City Hall, move your fire station west, and allow, allow this to be a retail trade area. You know, we do a P-three where you can look at moving your City Hall back to your downtown area in some aspect, like Jeff was saying, to bring in that energy, so. I didn't know if you guys had any questions, comments, emotional outbursts? Thank you. Alright, last, last item is the executive session. Again, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting into executive session to discuss retail development and potential litigation involved in the city? The session should take no longer than one hour, one and a half hours. It is anticipated that the council will not take action after executive session has concluded. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Hogg? Any questions or comments? Hearing the Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Alright, I think Ron suggested we take about ten minutes to do some administrative stuff, and then we'll, we'll get right into our executive session.